Good evening. We're gonna get started in just a minute. The special meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Roll call, Mr. Stale, please.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Bogus.
Here.
Commissioner Shu.
Here.
Commissioner Matamady.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Commissioner Wiseman-Ward.
Here.
President Lamb.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you to members of the public and to folks joining us virtually this evening. We have one very important action item. The Agreement for Services with Alvarez and Marshall Public Sector Services, also known as A and M, to assess and stabilize Empower SF. This is, I know, a very important and top priority for this board, for Dr. Wayne and this district. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second.
Someone second?
And I'd like to call on Superintendent Wayne for the staff presentation.
Thank you, President Lamb. Good evening, everyone. I have with me our Chief Technology Officer, Melissa Dodd, and our legal counsel, Suzanne Kim, and also via Zoom, Aaron Covington from A and M. And do we have the slideshow up? All right, so if you go to the next slide. So why are we here tonight? We're having a special meeting. And the reason we call special meetings as a Board of Education is because we need to conduct business that can't wait for a regular meeting. And so the business we're conducting tonight can definitely, definitely cannot wait for us to address the challenges that we're facing with our Empower SF system. So tonight, I'm going to talk a bit about where we are with Empower SF, our priorities and milestones for the work that needs to be done to stabilize the system, and then a partner we're bringing in to support that work, Alvarez and Marshall. And you'll hear from them how they will support us. So if you go to the next slide, you know, are we doing translation? Okay. And so. And so, you know, we brought in Empower for a necessary, for a good reason. We had a seventeen-year-old system that was not meeting our needs and were disconnected. We were doing processes by paper still in San Francisco in the year, you know, two thousand and twenty-one. And so we needed a new system. And the vision was to provide our employees access to the information so they can manage it themselves, make some of our complex processes easier and more secure, and then allow, get a system that could grow with our evolving needs. The system we brought in is ostensibly designed to do that, but the implementation has fallen far short of those goals. And so as I started in July coming in, I knew this was an area that needed immediate attention. And I began meeting with the team to understand what was happening with Empower SF. And if you go to the next slide, I identified three areas that really we needed to focus our energy and efforts to be able to improve. Working with the team, we noted that we needed to staff up and invest in operations, make people whole and keep people whole, and make the system work better for us. And the staff up and invest in operations, it was very clear that we do not have enough staff onboard to be able to follow through on all the issues that have been coming up with Empower. And we've struggled to fill, to find the right staff and to have the staff to come in. I think the most upsetting thing for everyone in this system is the idea that our incredibly hard-working teachers, custodians, site leaders, everyone in the system can't, has not been able to count on that they will get their full pay in a timely manner and that issues will be addressed. And so making people whole and keeping people whole, you know, is something that we must do. And this is the area where we know it's just, it's impacted people's lives. And it's just, it's not okay. We, I say a lot, we want our classroom teachers focused on what's happening in the classroom. We want our staff focused on supporting their schools. I also want our staff to feel valued and supported by the district. And that's not been happening, and that's, you know, that's not okay. And then we intended to have a system that makes things easier for us. And so see that, you know, there's the, that we need to take a system approach and so can support our processes in more user-centered ways. And so during my first two months, identified the, identified these as priority areas and really worked hard with the staff to make sure that we were making people whole and keeping people whole. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see last, this, the last month in August was our first full pay run for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And we really worked hard to make sure that all of our staff got paid and we streamlined our process to provide relief. So meaning that if, for some reason, a staff member didn't get paid, that they can come and immediately get compensation in an alternative way. So we ended up cutting over seventy-five checks for people just to make sure that on payday or right next to payday that they were getting what they deserved for their hard work. And then we've also spent last month figuring out how do we bring in additional support to assess and stabilize our system? So if you go to the next slide, you can see we've shared previously with the board some of the key activities that we needed to do from January to September. And you see from May to June was really when we were planning to transition to stabilize and then get focused on coming back to school. And then in response to also board request to assess our system and understand, is it the right system for us? Where are the gaps and holes? What's the challenges with implementation? And so we spent last month finding, seeing if we can find a partner who can help us with that. And then if you go to the next slide, you see that from October twenty-twenty-two to February twenty-twenty-three, this is our time, we've laid out, this is our time to fully stabilize the system. But I've seen how we cannot do that just with what we have on hand in-house. We have an incredibly hard-working team who literally spend nights and weekends. I've, you know, I know there's meetings on Sundays to make sure payroll happens, but it still hasn't been enough to stabilize the system. And so we've been looking to find, is there partners who can help us with this? And so we look to see what are other, what firms that have been out, what firms exist that have helped districts in times like this when they're facing a crisis, they have systems issues and need someone to come in and help quickly get results to, and get a district in the right direction. And so we got introduced to Alvarez and Marshall, a project management consulting firm that has a broad experience in numerous industries, including education. And so I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Covington to share how they work with us. I was sharing why we need them to work with us, and she'll share how they're going to work with us.
Great. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. As Dr. Wayne alluded to, I'm gonna give you a brief introduction of myself, tell you a little bit about my firm and the experience that we have walking into these situations. And then I will quickly walk you through our approach to help SFUSD navigate the situation that they're in. If you want, we could turn to the, a couple slides in, and I'll tell you a little bit about myself and the firm. So I'm Aaron Covington. I'm a managing director based in Washington, DC. I do lead our education practice. My personal experience has been serving as CFO, interim CFO, or financial advisor to many educational institutions over the last fifteen-plus years. In each of those situations, payroll in HR systems and financial systems have been a big component of that work and that effort in each of those organizations. I personally have worked with large school districts such as New York City, Newark, New Jersey Public Schools, Washington, DC. The list goes on and on. To tell you a little bit about my, our firm, so Alvarez and Marshall, as Dr. Wayne alluded to, is a global management consulting firm. We often get hired to work with organizations that are trying to stabilize and/or transform a situation. In the case of SFUSD right now, you're trying to do both. And so this is, this is the most common problem that we're called in to help, help rectify. So what we are also best known for in these situations is bringing our leadership, but also bringing the action and results that are required to help stabilize and transform. And so our team that I'll talk about further on really is a combination of leadership, strategic project management, and actually doers that are going to get in and actually drive the changes and results that need to happen. A little bit more about some of our client experiences. So we have been working with K to twelve school districts for the last twenty years, ranging from the St. Louis Public Schools, New Orleans Public Schools, New York City, Newark, Los Angeles Unified School District. The list goes on and on. We are currently engaged with school districts such as the Puerto Rico Department of Education, Houston Independent School District, Anchorage, Alaska, just to name a few. In each of these situations, in these current situations, we really are helping to focus the school districts on the academic recovery required or necessary right now to navigate through the pandemic, post-pandemic. And then also manage all of the federal funds that our school districts have received. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I just realized my video is not working. One moment. Great. Sorry about that. And so we're working with many school districts to help in the recovery that every school district in America is underway right now. We also, in particular, a few examples of system remediations that we found ourselves in the middle of. We're on the tail end of helping the city of Seattle on ERP remediation. So the city there has been focused on a large citywide ERP implementation effort, and they were running into some hurdles and challenges, roadblocks throughout that ERP remediation. We were hired to help come in and do an assessment and then come up with recommendations on how to efficiently and effectively move that ERP system remediation forward. That was a little bit about our firm. What I'd like to do now is turn our attention to our approach. So if we move to the next slide. So what is our focus here? So on this engagement, you know, leading into putting together our scope of work, we spent some time with the leadership team to gain an understanding of the current situation. We will say it's been a series of conversations, or a couple of conversations, I know as we get in and get into the details, the full depth and breadth of the challenges will reveal itself. But out of the gate, we have assembled a team of individuals that, as I mentioned before, provides strategic leadership and the necessary arms and legs to resolve this situation. Our goals in this process are, we have six specific goals that we've outlined. One is to triage the outstanding support tickets. Two is to quickly resolve the back pay issues. Three is to quickly close prior payrolls. Four is to identify and plan critical process, policy, and technology updates that are required so that these systems do not occur in the future, excuse me, these issues do not occur in the future. The fifth one is we're going to formalize the support processes. And six, stabilize and then transition back to SFUSD staff at the end of this process. So these are our outcomes or our goals that we've outlined in conjunction with the leadership team. How are we going to go about this? So at a high level, our work is really broken down into three phases. One is triage the situation. Two is stabilize, and three is transition back to the SFUSD team. So what does the triage phase mean? At a high level, or I'm going to walk you through in detail on the next slide what each of these means. But at a high level, triaging is really coming in and spending the four, first four weeks really developing an understanding, mobilize, and develop, and, and taking initial actions to rectify the issues. So it's looking at the incident ticket backlog and understanding the depth and breadth of the issues. Once we have a deep understanding following this four-week triage phase, we're going to then move to the more comprehensive stabilization and long-term system, people, process changes that are required to restore and stabilize the situation. The third piece is when we're done with the stabilization phase, we will turn back to transition and making sure that the team is properly staffed and properly trained and that all of the technology changes that are required are implemented. So let's move to the next slide. I'll provide a little bit more detail on each of the phases. So this is a high-level summary of our timeline. But underneath and behind all this is really a detailed work plan that lists out all of our activities and the specific outcomes that we expect to achieve at each phase. So as I mentioned before, the triage phase is very much about getting our arms around the depth and breadth of the issues. So a few of the items that we will really be focused on in this first phase is data discovery, ticket backlog root cause analysis, and also operations and technology problem identification. So the data discovery effort really entails getting our arms around and looking at all the tickets that have been submitted, the emails that have been submitted, understanding if there's trends, correlations, what, if there's commonality of the problems, so that then we can say, all right, how do we mobilize our team around all of these issues that need to be rectified? So in this data discovery phase, we will, it will reveal itself that the root cause of the problem lies in a certain part of the organization or a certain part of the technology. And that will help inform our go-forward plan. What we expect the outcomes to be at the end of this phase one, we will have a deep understanding of all of the problem tickets that are outstanding. We will have prioritized the support around the ticket backlog. We will prioritize the list of payroll adjustments that are required. We will also have a prioritized list of the technology updates. We'll, we'll have documented what our observations, the implications, and the recommendations are that have revealed themselves through this original, initial triage phase. And what we will also do is we will have a game plan as we enter this, the phase two stabilization, phase of the engagement. There is a specific inflection point at the end of phase one that when we, we understand the problems, we will take the moment to reevaluate the size and skill set of our team, subject to understanding the problems. So it is possible that the end of phase one, our team may scale down or it may scale up based on what, what uncover, what reveals itself in phase one. So we will come back to the board. We will be interacting with the leadership to be very transparent in what we're uncovering and what we see the path to success going forward is. Our, our plan for phase two, which again is subject to completion of phase one, is that then we turn to the long-term fixes for SFUSD. So this phase really is estimated at six to ten weeks, but we will revise this estimate once we get through phase one. But what this effort entails are really a few key areas. Stabilize systems and processes. Aggregate outstanding staff pay discrepancies. Close prior periods and files required for restatement. And then develop support processes and capabilities. So what does this mean in terms of outcomes? So we will, we will be able to apply operational and technical stabilization initiatives. So we will move these, these stabilization efforts into production. We will resolve outstanding back pay issues. We'll help close any residual issues related to January through October payrolls. We will document the Empower SF and payroll support processes. We will document technology initiatives and updates that are required, and we'll estimate the level of effort required by emphasis and the organization going forward to resolve the remaining issues. Once we complete the stabilization phase, we will have a small phase three that will be focused on handing back and turning over the reins back over to SFUSD. So until we get through phase one and phase two, we don't fully know the extent of what will be involved in phase three, but we do anticipate that the team and scope of that work will be reduced at that point in time once we get through phase two. This, this provides you a brief overview of our approach. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Wayne.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron, and I appreciate your being here to share the work you've done in the past and how you plan to approach the work here. And so before finishing, I just want to make a few more comments and bring up one more speaker. So you hear, we're, yeah, we're bringing, we're bringing A and M in because we need the support both in terms of the people power as well as the expertise and capacity that it can bring. So we have, we recognize and appreciate that the district saw that then we needed to increase staffing and payroll, technology, HR to address these issues. And in the budget for this year approved an additional, additional twenty-one positions. We've only been able to fill three or four of those. And so that's just significantly hampered our efforts to address these issues. So, you know, we couldn't keep, we can't keep waiting to fill those positions, and we need the expertise that A and M will bring. Fortunately, you know, the side effect of not having filled these positions is we do have salary savings for the first quarter alone. We have more than five hundred thousand in salary savings that will help offset the costs of this contract. So they're bringing in, you heard a team of eight, plus Aaron and another leader to provide support. So we'll be able to use some of the salary savings to, to provide the support, and it's bringing in much-needed people power. Secondly, you might be wondering, what does this mean for emphasis? And what you're hearing from A and M is they're going to provide the overall project support and bring in the, the, the systems-level analysis we need from people who have, you know, worked in the day-to-day of a, of a school district and not just providing the technical support. But we do need that technical support, and emphasis will continue to provide that. And A and M will be working closely with them as they see and help us identify issues where we need to change some of our backend processes. And then lastly, I just want to emphasize something I really appreciate in bringing forward this contract. I appreciate how A and M has worked with us. Is, I think one thing that has been a challenge is we haven't been clear on what are progress milestones, what are key performance indicators. We've named some, but to actually be able to provide measurable progress is something we're looking for out of this partnership. And it's actually built in to the contract that we can identify those after the triage phase before entering the stabilization phase. And that's not typical of a partner to, in the middle of a contract to say, you know what, district, you can have the right to pull back or change things because you, you know, and because we need to make sure we're clear on what the outcomes are. So that's been really helpful. So when making an investment like this, we know we've had to be mindful of our finances. So we have worked in partnership with the California Department of Education experts to review the steps we're taking to address this payroll system, these payroll and human resources system issues. So I do want to bring up Elliot Duchesne, just to speak briefly and share his assessment on the need for this contract. And then we'll turn it over to the board for questions and discussions.
Yeah. You can, you can go first. Yeah.
Now, there we go. Thank you, as always. It's great to be here. You picked great weather for this meeting. It was a little hot last week, so it feels great tonight. I want to tell you our role, and I'd be very cautious about it since we're here as advisors representing the Department of Education, which means we advise them, we advise you. And I want to make clear, we're not endorsing any contractor per se, but the concept of a contract. As you all well know, this has been problematic for the district, caused many, many deep and emotional problems for people, and clearly it needs to be fixed. Over eighty percent, probably between eighty-two and eighty-five percent of your district funds get paid to people who work here. And as we all know, they need their pay. Most of them, I don't think, are volunteers. So it's very critical to make sure that a payroll, a personnel system work properly. And this is not uncommon in data transformations and new data systems to bring in a third party either to investigate, to be an integrator, and to figure out what's, what's going wrong. Because there's so many pieces, players, and elements to a system like a personnel system. This is a big ticket item, not a ticket like the ticket up there, but a big, it's a chunk of change, to put it in technical terms. And I'm sure it's not easy for any of you to look at that and say, you know, we're already under state watch. How can we spend this money? And I will tell you that I think you absolutely need to have a third party come in and look at both the, the technical systems, being the six modules that are in the Empower system. Make sure they work at an in-depth level from, from the program scripts up to the system design and also the human systems in processing those elements and how they integrate with one another. That rarely, by the way, and so this, this is to, to and behalf of your staff is rarely ingrained in the staff of an organization and the transformation, and sometimes not in even all of the parties that are, that are part of it. So it's very common, I went through something very similar. I won't tell you how many decades ago, but it was more than two. So when we converted a system from a unisys system to a unic system, that was, these are old, old things, Cobal and Algal to, to a common database. Okay, one of you know about all that, but it's not easy. And we ended up shipping like a million lines of code to India. But it, so it takes somebody who's not only an integrator, but somebody who can do kind of the hot-shot work of looking the elements in the system. And I think it's very necessary for you to do that. And frankly, I don't think you will get there without a third party. So I don't think this is a, we don't want to spend the money. We do want to spend the money. I think you have to spend the money. And in this process, you will find out, is the system going to work? Is it going to live up to its capabilities? What do you, as an organization, have to change? And what does, what does maybe the emphasis or whomever is involved have to change? So I want to say in our role from advising by the state, we see this as a necessary expenditure. It's not bad money on top of bad money. It's money you have to spend to make sure that you're going in the right direction. And I don't think you get there without external resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Duchesne, and that concludes our presentation. Turn it back over to the board president.
Thank you. Before we open up to board discussion, I would like to hold a public comment. And again, to express to the public, for special meetings, we allow public comment in person. So at this time, I'd like to invite our speakers.
Thank you, President Lamb. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. You'll have one minute each to speak. Roberto Peña. Madison Williams. Chris Claus. Vivette Rackett. Dante Papiliski.
Judge, I'd like to extend it up to two, up to two minutes tonight.
Certainly. Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Good evening. My name is Roberto Peña. I'm an alumni from this district. I came to this country in nineteen eighty. I'm a parent of kids in the district. I've graduated three sons. Some of you remember me from being here before. My daughter's a tenth grader at Lowell. Thanks to the previous board policies, my daughter got selected for lottery. I'm an employee from this district since nineteen ninety-eight. I traumatized kind of being here a little bit, so I apologize. I'm here because I was also impacted by Empower last year. I was diagnosed with leukemia, stage one lymphoma cancer, and my money was all over the place. Thank, thank God for my wife and the resources that she was able to have, and we were able to kind of maintain. It was hard. I submitted a ticket. I was just looking, three thirty of this year. I got a response on Friday saying my ticket was resolved. I, I resolved my own ticket by making a little bit of noise coming here and working with the great attendant. I work at Francisco Middle School. Mr. Lee really helped me figure that out. But if I wouldn't have done that, I would have had to wait. And there's a lot of my coworkers that are in the same position. And so it was funny that I, not funny, but coincidence that I received that email on Friday. One of our parents passed away Friday. Eddie Oliver Cohen passed away. He's been a friend of mine for over twenty years. And he had his benefits removed twice. He went to go get his medicine, and he was told that SFUSD had terminated him. We can't do that to our folks. He was in this district 28 years. He posted something on the ninth, August 9th, that he wanted to retire. He's not going to have that chance. And so I ask you, I beg you, if it's 2.5 million, if it's 3 million, please do it. But we got to stop this. We're losing a lot of good people in this district. And this system just caused me to lose one of my friends. And where does the bug stop? For me, it stops here, stops with Dr. Wayne, even though he's new. And so I ask you to figure this out. We don't want to lose any more coworkers. We don't want for you guys to feel that you're responsible for something, but in the big picture, you are. So please, I I hope you guys pass this, even though I'm not a person that says spend money, because we need money for our kids. But let's figure this out, please. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Hi again, I should say. My name is Madison Williams, and I'm sure you all know me. I'm a teacher at Washington High, and I'm a credit recovery teacher as well. In case you've forgotten, I was paid late in July 2021, in March 2022, among other issues. I was then paid 16 cents an hour when I contracted COVID in July during summer school. And 47 days later, I still have not been paid. But I did also get an email this week asking to close my help ticket. I am asking you, even though I hate the word Empower by now, to please authorize as much money as possible to fix Empower tonight. Empower is a disaster, and educators have had enough of this mess. The bottom line is, this is an abusive relationship. You keep promising us that you will fix things and treat us how employees should legally be treated. But you are repeating the same mistakes. One more time, and I am breaking up with you for another district. I have to look out for myself, and you have to look out for your employees. And, you know, I've never had two minutes up here, so I'll tell you, my dad, my my parents have taken care of me for, you know, up until five years ago when I launched into the world. And they helped send me off to Davis. And I want you to think about your kids, like your your daughters, your sons. And imagine how my dad feels when he calls me because I didn't get paid again. After he gave everything to send me to school, to support me. It's just really devastating, and I really need you to think of us as and what your children would experience too. So please make the right decision tonight.
Hello, board. I'm here tonight because part of the reason why we're here tonight is because of sole source contracting that brought us Empower SF in the first place. And so tonight, as I look over this contract, I'd like to state for the record that the contract before you tonight violates the San Francisco City and County competitive bidding and fair contracting rules and regulations, which require you guys not to approve contracts above $90,000 without having multiple vendors to choose from. The other reason why I am concerned is because after looking at this contract and looking up Alvarez Marsall Public Sector Services in 2016, they were actually in a competitive bid process with the Guam Department of Education. And they did not meet the threshold of being the most competitive builder bidder. In fact, someone else was chosen. And in response, this company actually sued that district and held them up in a year of litigation in order to hopefully win the bid process, which ultimately the judges and the courts decided to dismiss their claims. They then went on an appeal to then still continue on that lawsuit and again lost the appeal. As we're looking at the harm that's going to be caused to these teachers and staff and custodians for the next year, I really would advise you guys to really thoroughly consider looking at all options and all vendors that are possible before putting all of these people through this again with someone that may not be the best service provider for this, especially when it's $2.5 million on the table, 800,000 of that initially. So even with the $500,000 of savings that you're claiming, there's still $300,000, that's $300,000 that's coming out of from what this contract says, money that should be used to hire staff that we need so badly in our district right now with students, professional staffing. And as of today, just wanted to let you know, there are 419 still open positions here in this district. So you're drawing down on something else, and I want you guys to really consider using some other part of the budget to draw this money from.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dante Papaliski, and I'm a math teacher and soccer coach at and co-UBR at George Washington High School. I've been working with on behalf of my colleagues who have had numerous and repeated payers as a result of Empower, and their stories have devastated me. I am deeply dismayed by the proposal to throw good money after bad by paying Empower or some other private sector consultant to fix the problems that they themselves created. The siphoning of money to private contractors that then create problems that we have to pay them more money to solve is deeply troubling. Especially when, whenever it comes time for us to properly fund our schools or give educators a living wage, we are told there is no money for that. I truly hope that in this upcoming contract year, we aren't told that the money that should go to training and retaining educators and funding schools went to giving yet another private contractor a handout. If a private contractor must be brought in, it should be paid for by Empower, who sold us a faulty product. And the people responsible for the disastrous decision to contract our payroll system to Empower should be held responsible. We are a public school system. We are funded by taxpayer money. Keep that money in the schools, at the school sites, and make it possible to retain educators and allow us to live here so that we can properly serve our communities.
Hi. I'm Chris Claus, a Spud teacher and co-UBR at Washington High School. You've heard from me and many of my colleagues over and over, again and again, since the beginning of the botched implementation of the new payroll system in Empower SF. The failures of SFUSD to properly implement this system, pay people correctly, and maintain people's benefits has caused a serious mental, emotional, and in some cases, physical harm, manifesting in unaddressed health issues and health issues caused by stress. I'm not telling you to vote a specific way on this. I haven't had time to form a real opinion on it, in part because I didn't see all of the stuff with enough notice for me to make an opinion. I'm asking you to make sure to ask and have real answers to the following questions. Will spending this money actually fix the issues? What are the consequences for SFUSD, our consultant company, and the company behind Empower SF if payroll issues continue? There need to be consequences. And what is the realistic timeline for getting these issues addressed and permanently resolved? People's lives are literally at stake here. Kids are losing amazing educators and school staff because of this. The stakes could not be higher. So ask all the right questions, not just the ones on my list. Get real answers and make the right decision on this. Then come to the bargaining table with real raises and improvements to our working conditions now in our contract re opener and in the spring when UESF begins to bargain new educator contracts. Stop putting off meeting with us. This is the third day in a row. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Thank you to the public for coming out this evening, providing your comments. Colleagues, I'm going to open it up for questions. I like to go round robin. That way I can keep I'll keep track of who's spoken and who still has to speak. And I like to allow up to two minutes for our first round of questions. Now, that's just the timed is just for the board member, not about the answering piece of it, because I know that there's going to be questions both to Dr. Wayne, to our vendor, as well as potentially to our fiscal experts. So at this time, I like to open it up for questions, first round of questions. And I'll start to my left with Commissioner Weissman, board.
Thank you. So should I just ask one? I mean, I have a list, so. Should I ask and then let either Dr. Wayne or Haddad or counsel? Okay, all right. Okay, so my first question actually has to do with the the process for selecting and our confidence in this particular company and the fact that there hasn't been an RFP, a request for a proposal, and sort of how we I understand that there's a real time pressure here, but if you can just explain to us and the public a little bit more about how this came to be.
Yeah, so there was, yeah, there is a time pressure, and as I shared, we are lacking staff as well as professional expertise. So did seek out and look for professional services and look at providers and did speak with various providers who to see how they might be able to help us, and particularly looking for a provider who could have staff available to help immediately. So again, it's no small feat in these times to have a team of eight able to come to San Francisco to provide the support. I'm going to ask Suzanne Kim, our legal counsel, to speak to the process that how we were able to move forward with this without the the full RFP process. So we did do due diligence, including reference checks, but we didn't go through that process. And so Suzanne, if you can explain the distinction, that would be helpful.
I need to press this button for you to hear me. I do.
You don't need to hold it. Just press it once.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. So there's an exception to competitive bidding under both the government code and the public contract codes, which exempts professional service contracts from bidding. So you could bid out this type of contract, but you are not required to just be. And the rationale behind that is these are professional services, these are experts. So you don't, these are not necessarily contracts that would be bid out.
And that is compared to just if you can, since it was brought up the idea of a sole source contract. Like, so we did do that when we went, when we brought in, it's really SAP that runs our, that's our Empower, right?
So so sole source contracts are different. That is another exception to competitive bidding. And that is when only one entity has that specific product, and that's the only place where you can obtain it from. So it wouldn't help you to competitively bid it out because you would only get one.
Sorry, I meant to clarify, but we did, sorry, I asked that quickly, but the the other, the for bringing in Empower, that's not necessarily a professional service, and we did go through an RFP process. That's what I meant to meant to point out, that Empower is, is the SAP is the software behind it. That was that we went through the bidding process, but this is a professional service. This is not like a software system.
Do I still have time on my my two minutes? Okay. So my next question relates actually to, it was page 11, the timeline on on page 11 of the, that's the timeline and milestones. And one question I have is, you know, I appreciate that there has to be a triage process. This is a new group of folks coming in with their expertise to to look at what's going on. But how much of the triage work has already been done? Like, how much can we, I mean, clear, I I'm I'm I'm, we hope a lot of things have been happening, but how much can we say, here's what we know when they come in on on week zero? I don't know what week zero means, but when that happens.
Sure, I can take that question, and thank you for the question. A lot has already happened. And we, so we will not be starting from scratch. We will be sharing all of that and have already started compiling and getting, bringing all of that together. We have been doing issue identification, initial trends, trying to get at individual issues, what are are there underlying root causes that are impact, that are then impacting and having multiple issues come out of that root cause. So we will be using all of that as our base and our foundation. Our challenge has been, though, that our limited capacity, we have been focused on on working to address issues, resolve issues, be as responsive as we can with the people that we have in that more reactionary mode, as we're also running monthly and biweekly payroll processes. And so needing to have that additional capacity, people, power, to be able to work through all of that and really map, help us map that out even further. So to say, you know, having that deep dive analysis of each ticket and each issue, that's what we're looking and will be part of that initial phase. But we will be bringing a lot of information and resources and all of the initial analyses that we've already done to bear here.
And then just to add, Erin, if you could share a little bit about week zero, because I think that's, you know, there's been due diligence that's been done before this contract has started to understand what the scope that should be and what's going to happen during that time.
Yeah, and the week, thank you very much. The week zero is really that mobilization time period where we already have our data requests put together and assembled. We have a detailed work plan for our first four weeks. What we are calling week one is basically when we have the data in our hands and we have direct access to the SFU FSUSD, SFUSD leadership team, so that we can actually begin the diagnostic and the action planning. So the week zero is already underway, and it's about organizing ourselves. That's work that we're doing just to prepare for the contract, but week one is when action is really starting to happen. And so that starts with the start of our contract.
Okay, this may be my last question, this first round robin, is you talked about sort of, you know, where what the root causes are and understanding the root causes. And I mean, I guess we can never say never, because this system's been a little bit of, a lot of a disaster for a lot of reasons, it seems. So what if the root causes, like this system just was not created properly? Are we looking at the possibility that we have to shift to something else entirely?
So yeah, so I'm going to say yes, as part of the scope, we actually have asked A and M to do that assessment. You've heard they've worked in many districts and so have a sense. So Erin, can you talk about that part of the assessment?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that. So what we find most often in these situations is that the issues oftentimes are more likely to lie in the people process, really the process issues versus a challenge with the under, the actual technology product. What's so important when you implement a new system is clearly defining what the processes are. Who are the people that are involved in each step of the process? And how does the technology support that underlying process? While I appreciate there are challenges with the current technology system, it is a technology product that does come from a large corporation that serves many other large corporations in America. And so what we will do is by looking at the the challenges, the data, the tickets, it will help reveal is the problem or challenge, does it lie with the process? Does it lie with the configuration and the technology? And through this diagnostic, diagnostic, we will be able to say that, yes, this Empower SF was the right product for you, or no, it was not the right product for you. And so this initial diagnostic will help to answer that question. But as I mentioned, what we oftentimes find is there's so much definition of process and who's responsible for what at each step of the process, or each step, that is so critical to the success of implementing a new technology.
But I know the board did ask for that assessment, and so we, that's why we included it in this, in this contract. And I mean, if the answer is no, we will share, and then we're going to have to make some other decisions. But let's, we'll let them go through that analysis, and you hear they have the background to conduct it and provide an independent assessment as not someone who's already invested in this, in this particular software.
Bishop Alexander.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have already been answered, but I guess one that I still have is around this issue with the help tickets and kind of our responsiveness to employees that currently have problems. So is that, I guess I don't understand why that's such an issue or why it's lasting so long. And that may or may not be directly related to the contract, but I'd love to hear response to that.
Sure, I can speak to that and also share that that is as part of this initial triage phase. That is integral and key for us to focus in on and both address the why and how we're how we're addressing it, how we're fixing it. I can share some of the why, though, which is we have, it's both a staffing challenge. So in terms of the number of people. both a staffing challenge. So in terms of the number of people that we have available to respond to questions. So in our salary office, for example, there is one person who is, handles salary and compensation. In our benefits, there are maybe two or three people, depending on factors. So in payroll, there are four clerks. So if we have 10,000 employees who are all submitting tickets, or, and a lot of those tickets are questions, and you, you know, hear the heartbreaking challenges and issues and frustrations that come of it, when there are tickets upon tickets related to the same issue, or different people sending in tickets and emails about the same issue or a similar issue or the same individual, it just compounds the factor. We've got to, like, pull all of that back and get at then the heart of each individual employee, making sure that understanding of each of their issues. And so that's really been part of the challenge. And I'd say also on the, even for the team members that we do have, the, the ramp up and the training and the learning curve for everybody to understand all of the nuances and complexities, to understand, okay, is this a, is there a data issue that, is there a data problem here? Is there something wrong in the employee profile? Is there a process issue? Is it, is it a technical issue? And so that has also compounded and affected our ability to be both responsive and accurate in those responses and staying on top of all of the inquiries that we have coming in.
And also, just to be real, I mean, we, you know, in, in the first few months, we got behind, right? There were so many tickets. And so that's why we hear this, oh, we got closed out now, even though the issue was resolved, because there's a try to catch up, but then they're asking A&amp;M to help us get through that, that process. But we got behind, and unfortunately, there's so many issues, and then you hear the staff capacity. So we're prioritizing right now that focus area of making people whole and keeping them whole, so people aren't, not getting paid, you know, in the upcoming pay runs.
Thank you. I also, I guess my brief comment then was just, I really appreciate the public commenters, including the ones who were urging us to do this, and the ones who were speaking against it, and the concerns they raise about, I think someone said, you know, putting more money into a private, another private contractor. And so I think those are really valid concerns, but at the bottom line is, this has to be fixed. And I think, to me, it seems like a thoughtful response, and I appreciate the superintendent for putting it together. We, we've got to put our resources into it, even, even if it may not be ideal. And it sounds like this group at least can bring a team in and has the expertise. And so, but we've got to get it right.
Commissioner Xu.
Thank you. My question is, I think earlier during the presentation, there was a timeline of January to September of 2022. When this timeline was put together, I, actually, no, I wasn't here in January, but I was here in March. I remember seeing, you know, April, May, what we were supposed to do. We were supposed to staff up and then whatever plan it was, right? So it seems that obviously that plan has not worked out. And now we have a different plan. So my question is, what have we learned from observing that our previous plan didn't work out? What did we miss to cause that plan not work out and that we have to have a new plan now?
I'll share one thought, and then Melissa, who, you know, can add on, because she was here during that, that time. Actually, I'm going to share two thoughts. I want to think, I'm not, what we show from October, for now, like, what do we have, from October to February, still, it was what was showed before. So I think there's, and it's not so much that it's a new plan, it is that we need capacity to follow through on the plans. So I think the two things I would say on what, on the issues that weren't followed through on from January to, to September, is you hear some capacity concerns, you know. But on top of that, I just want to emphasize the fact that the key performance indicators that we're going to identify with A&amp;M are so critical. And so you see some milestones there that didn't necessarily have the hard data we need to say, like, X percentage of tickets will be resolved by Y date, or, you know, these, you know, five systems issues will be addressed by X date. And so that's what we're expecting in the next four weeks, because they'll have an idea of what the outcomes are, and then we can establish those, those measures. And we haven't been able to report on those, I think, in the way that the board, you know, has been seeking. I don't know if you want to add anything, but so capacity and having clear, like, the measurable outcomes piece. We have outcomes on that chart, but we didn't assign measures to them, which is what we're going to be doing for the second phase.
I can add more if you like, or?
Commissioner Xu, did you have additional?
I'll, I'll let.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, President Lamb. First of all, I just want to express my deepest condolences to the Algon family and friends. It's very, very sad news to hear. I just want to know what happens if this doesn't work out. Like, what are the consequences? And people, I think, need to be held accountable. And I know there needs to be some kind of forensic dive at some point, but people are asking, like, what's going to happen? Who's going to be held accountable?
Erin, if you can speak to, as you said, you work with many firms. If you can speak to your experience around that, because I feel I've shared one thing is around the key performance indicators. And we built in the contract an ability to end, you know, very quickly if we're not seeing what we need to see. But Erin, when you speak to your work with other districts and organizations, and how you, you know, your experience in delivering results, and when the results aren't on target, what, what happens?
Yeah, so, you know, we are a very action-oriented firm. And so we, our sole purpose focus is to actually deliver the results. So once we have a clear definition of, of the depth and breadth of challenges, we will move quickly to, to meet those key, to identify those key performance indicators and execute on those key performance indicators that we're demonstrating results. We, I honestly can't see, think of a situation in my career where we have not met what we have committed to. And so we are a very action-oriented consulting firm. And so in the event, as Dr. Wayne alluded to, if you're not happy with the progress that we're making, this contract does have a seven-day termination clause. So if you're not seeing the results that you want, you have the ability to terminate this with seven days' notice. And so that gives the district the ability to walk away if we're not meeting the needs that you, you have, meeting your needs.
Okay, I missed part of the last part.
Yeah, so she was saying that we have, so they're action-oriented to that. The, we built into the contract, we have the seven-day lockout, which is not. Oh, okay, yeah. So we, that, we built in the contract that we're able to walk away from this, or two things, really, that we're able to walk away from this in seven days, which is not typical. Typically, usually there's a 30-day period. And also that we're not obligated to move beyond the triage phase to the, to the, to phase two, if we don't feel like we're getting the, the support that, that we are expecting from this contract. So that's what we're going to be looking for in these first four weeks before committing any additional funding. And we're bringing it forward with confidence that they're going to identify and we'll have those key performance indicators to hold them accountable to. But if they don't, that's our, our ability to hold them accountable and to pull back.
Thank you. Commissioner Matomadi.
I want to say thank you to Erin Covington and A&amp;M for presenting with us. This is the first time we've actually seen our partners in this project, so that's progress. And I also want to thank Dr. Wayne for leading this and working to actually do the scope and sequence to get this handled. So, yeah, I've been on the board for six months, and this is the first time that we've really had an opportunity to meet with the professionals who are saying that they're going to help us. So my general question, which is rhetorical, is where is Infosys? They're not here, so they can't answer that question as far as their role in all of this. But my bigger question is really about, when will this, how and when will this feel different for our educators and workforce? Like, the presentation that I'm seeing in here is very helpful, as scope and sequence, we've talked about that a lot in different capacities. But what I'm not hearing is when this will actually be implemented. And like, one of my questions is, do we, when will we, if we do not have staffed phone support service, for example, like, when will our educators be able to get regular contact? So really, two questions. How, how, how and when will this feel different for educators and workforce? And when will we have real-time response to this? And then the last one is payroll integration. This is a more systemic question, is how are we getting the info, information we need from staff into building out our system's approach? It seems to be missing from the actual part is the information about how our system works and how that is reflected in Empower.
Thank you. So I think to address the, how will it feel different and what will the response be? You heard A&amp;M speak to being both, they're coming in, doing analysis and assessment, but also doing, doing some doing. And so we actually talked to them and shared, it's a real need to have some, some support. And so they're going to evaluate, some support in being responsive to staff. So they're going to do an evaluation of what, and make some recommendations around that. So if you want to speak a little bit more to that, Erin, about what you, what you're going to be looking for and what you've done in other districts around this.
Yeah, so one of, as, as I've mentioned, once we get our arms around the data, one of the things that we like to do is then look at, you know, where are the trends and how common are the issues? So if we get through all of the help desk ticket issues, and hypothetically, let's say 50% of the issues or all the tickets relate to one issue, we're going to prioritize actioning around those tickets that have the greatest impact on the greatest number of employees, so that the employees can feel that impact quickly. And so I know some organizations that we've worked with in the past, when we walk in, they kind of take that first in, first out, ticket-by-ticket approach to resolving it. That is an approach that, that we see organizations use. But what we want to do is go in and say, let's work, see where we, let's look holistically to identify how we can have the greatest impact on the largest number of employees at once. And so that will help drive our efforts, so employees can feel the impact as quickly as possible. I do, I say that, and I recognize there will still be, you know, tickets in there that are unique to one person, and we will have to identify those or work on those on a case-by-case basis. But we appreciate employees need to have these issues rectified as quickly as possible. One other item that is also somewhat of an answer to one of the earlier questions, in the triage phase, we're going to look to the, to, we're going to evaluate whether we need to stand up a call center. So I've heard many of you say that there's not a response or a ticket's being closed and they haven't heard. Well, one of the ways to respond to this situation is create a clear communication channel. And one of those solutions can be to stand up a call center where employees actually have a live person where they're on the, they can speak to them on the phone and talk about the status of the problem. We will evaluate if that's the right solution for SFUSD to help with the transparency and information flow. And that may be something that we put forth as a solution in stage two.
And then Melissa, if you want to speak to just the third, I don't, now, don't remember.
Can I just get the timeline part, though? I, I heard, like, the, the concept of the steps that will be taken. But I'm, I'm asking, like, if we're approving this contract, there's, it's phases, we see the weeks. When, when within this scope and sequence would be a reasonable area that, that we'd be communicating out and teachers would be, and educators and our workforce would be actually feeling like they're getting responses and resolution and, and a phone, you know, that can, can call someone?
So I think, Erin, you were saying, during the triage phase, as well, where you're looking at all the cases, you'll determine if a call center is necessary. And, because we did have a drop-in clinic where we were able to serve people, hear what you're saying, and we, we get those emails all the time, right? The, so the tickets come in, and, and I haven't been able to talk to anybody. So I think we'll, we'll keep offering clinics and offering the support we can. But by the end of those four weeks is when we should know, like, do we have a handle on those issues? And we, you know, don't need to take the step of, like, setting up a full call center, or, or, you know, do we, or what other options are there? But that's what the triage phase is for, right, Erin?
That's correct. The, most significant relief will take place during the stabilize phase. But as I mentioned, if there's items that we can action on and actually resolve payroll issues during that triage phase, we won't wait till stage two or phase two to take action. We will start that in phase one. But the bulk of the relief will start to be felt in stage two, or the stabilization period, starting in that early phase of, of phase two, early first, first few weeks of phase two.
Can I just flag that our teachers, drop-in clinics are incredibly challenging for our teachers across our system to participate in. I would urge an early look at a phone number that gets answered. I think that is urgent.
Okay, so we'll definitely look at that. And then the one last thing I'll say, and I don't even know if I could, I'm not even saying this, that I'm proud of this, because it needed to have happened a long time ago. But I do think some, you know, immediate relief has been figuring out our system to be able to write checks right away for people who haven't been able to be paid. And we, in July, we weren't able to do that. And we saw the results of that with about 50 EED staff down here at a board meeting. For the August pay run, we were able to work that out. And so there were people who didn't get it through the traditional means, but, but the cutting the checks seemed to provide relief. But really, the evidence will be, you know, when we have that hard data about how many issues there are and how they've been resolved. So like I said, not proud, but glad we were able to do that, because it's not okay that, that people aren't getting paid.
Commissioner Bogus, Vice President Bogus.
Yeah, Superintendent, if you could just, I think, address the, the people who are still coming to board meetings, and I think stating the issues that they're having with their, their individual payroll. And I guess, is that representative of the fact that we just still haven't fully addressed the issues and the things that we've done to alleviate people getting checks, hasn't fully reached everyone at this point?
Yeah, Melissa, you want to speak to that? Like, we had one tonight who's had several issues that I, I imagine you're familiar with.
Yes, familiar with the issues, and we are working on them. As with the, I think, there are two factors at play. So one is, of the, the issues, and Erin spoke about it, looking at the scale and impact of them. We want to make sure that we're addressing issues. If there's an issue that, that reaches a far, a larger number of employees in some way, that we tackle those first. So that's one. And I think overarching, it's that, given limited time, resources, and capacities, needing to prioritize the issues that we have on our plate in terms of a very high priority to high priority. And then what's the level of complexity and effort that's needed to resolve those issues? So we also look at level of complexity. Some are easier to resolve than others, especially if it's an issue that cuts across the system, a process, and data work that we need to do, that can be a very complex issue. And then I'd say, most recently, and what I was going to mention before, we are, we run, and obviously, we're an organization, as Mr. Duchan said, we are comprised of, you know, 10,000 employees. That's, we're, we're a people organization for our students and our employees as well. And so we have operations that must happen on, like, on, on a schedule. And each month presents new, new operations, or, or quarters even, sometimes months, present new operations, summer school, launching of summer school is like launching of a new school year, again, launching in August. So for August, and as Dr. Wayne mentioned, we were prioritizing all of our new hires, all of our educators and staff who are moving from one position to another, staffing, getting our, our TSAs into classrooms as well. So that adds to, to that issue and that complexity.
No, thank you for that clarity. I guess, I guess ultimately, the question I want to ask is, based on the timelines and the projected estimates, when can I, as a commissioner, say that we are paying all of our staff and employees? Is there a date certain that we feel like we can be comfortable to say that if that is not today?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, because we are paying our employees. But what you're asking, when date certain can we say, are we paying them correctly, where they don't need to review their check, and they can, don't need to come down to figure out, to address any issues related to it? And I think that's, that's, that's the measures we'll have at the end of the triage phase, to say, okay, here's the targets we have. I see Erin nodding, I think, right?
Appreciate that clarity. Yeah, and I think- And I think, in that same regard, if we could just talk about the triage phase a little bit. And I think the clarity we have that that would just be the four weeks with the zero week added on versus that being something that takes more time. And just, I think, the clarity we have of that kind of initial phase and being able to kind of make a move our fifth weekend, which is, you know, the fourth week.
Yeah, so, Erin, correct me if I have this wrong. We're, I mean, we're, week zero is actually week zero in the sense that we've been talking with them for a couple of weeks now. We shared with them what we have available. The reason why she was saying, Erin was saying, is week zero is like, we can't actually provide them access to our data until we have approved contract. But week one is really going to start Monday, September, what's Monday? September 19th, correct, Erin?
That's correct, 19th.
So, so, we'll prove the, if you approve the contract tonight, we'll start sharing the information right away so they can do the data analysis. But that will still be considered week zero. Week one is September 19th. So, then, the end of the triage phase is October 14th.
No, I appreciate that clarity. Because I think for me, it's very important that if we are putting a timeline out, especially for the triage phase, that we're able to stick to that and execute that. Because I think if we aren't able to deliver on that, either on the district side, on the consultant side, then we actually have a very big issue moving forward. And I think for me, I just want, I guess, clarity and certainty that these are hard and fast, like, these aren't just things that are on the paper, but that we actually view them as doable and that we won't have a conversation at the end of the four weeks about us not entering the stabilization phase. No, I guess I want clarity. Like, I just want confirmation that this timeline is a certain and that as we agree to it, that there's a commitment from everyone that this is realistic versus this is a target that we are just kind of hoping to reach, I guess.
So, Erin, I mean, the triage phase has to end after four weeks, right?
Yeah, our team is ready to go. We've got our whole team mobilized. They're fully briefed on the situation. They're ready to start reviewing data ASAP. I know, as I mentioned earlier, we've already shared with Melissa our data request list. I know her team is actively working on it. So, the process is already underway. So, we're ready to go. So, we're working towards this four-week timeline already.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think the last part I have is if I could just have just a brief explanation again on what will we and what will the public be able to know at the end of stage gate one? And kind of the way that we'll kind of, I guess, be conveying that, I guess, the commissioners and the public, the kind of the results of the triage phase? Or if we are reporting those things out publicly, then if that will just be internal at that point? Just clarity around that, you know?
Let me speak to what the outcomes, what we've outlined as the outcomes at the end of phase one. So, we've outlined six different specific outcomes with phase one. One is the root cause analysis around the problem tickets. So, as I've mentioned, is we'll understand how many tickets there are. What are the trends? What are the number of incidences or issues within each of these trends? So, we'll have the depth and breadth of what the outstanding issues are based on the tickets that have been submitted. The second item that we'll have is a prioritized support on how to address that backlog of tickets. So, we'll know, you know, for example, if, you know, 50% of the employees all have this one issue, we're going to mobilize our resources around addressing 50% of the issues immediately, as quickly as possible. So, through the issue identification, we will also, the second thing is have a prioritization of how we're going to address it. We will also have a ticket backlog. The third item is a prioritized list of payroll adjustments. So, not only is there employee pay that's impacted, there's also the backend kind of financial accounting associated with it as well. So, we will have those payroll, a game plan on how to make those payroll adjustments. The fourth item is a prioritized list of technology updates. So, if there's reconfigurations of the system that need to happen, that we've, that reveal themselves through phase one, we will have a list of those technology updates, reconfigurations, and with that, a prioritization of those changes that need to happen. The fifth one is we will document our observations and recommendations, especially around people and process issues. So, if we need to more clearly define, or if we say that, you know, it's not clearly defined who is responsible, for example, of inputting time or the approval of the time, we may make a recommendation on how to improve that overall. So, it's documented observations and recommendations. And then, the last piece is really an update to our work plan for phase two. So, we will restate our phase two stabilization time period, the level of resources that are required, and the timeline that we expect to execute all of this. So, that's our last piece and deliverable at the end of the triage phase one.
And if someone could just speak to the, I guess, communication with the public as far as like what they'll know at the end of stage gate one? Or if that is not a place where there will be kind of public dialogue that'll come later in the process?
Well, I will say, we've been doing more regular Empower updates to, definitely to staff. And so, you know, we'll be doing an update explaining what, you know, assuming we move forward with this, that moving forward with this. And then, we plan to have an update at the end of the triage phase as well. We'll probably, we'll have updates in between. We've been doing one about every, almost weekly, just because people are eager to hear that we're working on things, even if we can't, you know, even if it's not fully resolved.
Thank you for that clarity. Additional question, at the end of the triage phase, where we're presenting the results from it, and there is needs around technology or additional support, how is that fiscal ask going to be brought forth to us? And is that being generated internally or externally? And I'm assuming all that is outside of the scope of this contract would be additional things that we would need to procure or cover financially. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the main area right now is staffing. Again, we'll do the assessment if we actually have the right software. But that's why we wanted to be transparent about that there could possibly be a phase three, even if we didn't put a number to it. Because I think of a concern I've heard from the board is we, you know, you are presented with something that may help, you approve it, and then we come back with another, you know, ask. And so, we want to be clear. We are likely coming back with another ask in phase three, but we, you know, can't put a number to it yet. As Erin says, she predicts it will be a much smaller ask because of the team, but we don't want to put that out there, that annoying. But we'd rather be transparent that it is coming, rather than that be a surprise after 10 weeks. They're like, oh, here's, here's phase three, by the way.
Thank you for that. No, I think I appreciate the clarity in just being able to say that this isn't the last request for funds to resolve this issue that's going to come before the board. And so, I just think to just be aware that this is the next step in the process. And that this isn't the last amount of money or time that we'll kind of be spending to fix this and to correct this. Thank you.
Commissioner Mutamidi, you had one follow-up?
I did have a follow-up. Again, going back to where is Infosys? Because in response to Erin, what you were just saying with this list of technology updates, for example, that, I think, would largely fall on Infosys. And so, my questions are, what is their level of commitment? I'm also not seeing them identified in the contract and roles and responsibilities, although they're implicitly sitting in there. And, you know, were they, what is their role? Were they ever invited to participate in this? And how do they figure in, since they are actually a bit of a linchpin potentially in some of these pieces?
Yeah, so, I'll say, yes, they have been invited to, since I've been on board, they've been invited to participate in this. It's, you know, we've talked about whether, you know, that, whether that's in their scope or not. I think that's something I continue to follow up on because they're our partners. And then, either Melissa or Erin, can you speak to, I mean, we have, where are they? You know, we've, the conversations we've had with Infosys about this partnership.
So, I can speak to that. So, we, in terms of the day-to-day, Infosys, Infosys works side by side with the SFUSD team. We have partners in all of our functional and module areas. And I will share on the nights and weekends that we're working, they're working with us as well. And for this engagement and this structure, we're looking at leveraging our existing, some of our existing meeting structures so that we're all going to be on the same page and working together. So, for example, that will be at a minimum, a bi-weekly, if not weekly, leadership meeting between Infosys, Dr. Wayne, myself, A&amp;M, so that we're all in concert, working together. The same thing in terms of, we have a steering committee that has functional leads from all of the divisions that integrate into Empower, and so, participating in that as well. So, we're mapping it out into all of the levels of the work that is underway and have had conversations with their Infosys leadership team as well about this so that we're working in lockstep together.
Can I direct the question to Erin, please, to ask how, what your expectations are of the level of involvement needed in order to carry out the work that you are proposing to embark upon?
You know, as we, so, we will work in partnership with Infosys. We work in partnership with all different types of consultancies on all of our different engagements. So, we will make it as collaborative as possible. What will emerge, as I've talked about during phase one, is those adjustments or changes that need to be made to the technology. And so, we will work to give that information to Infosys. And then, in conjunction with Melissa and her team, make sure that those, those changes are actually made on a timely basis. So, our work or our recommendations will directly feed changes that they will, we will ask them to make with SFUSD sign off on that.
Thank you.
Mark, I was going to, is it okay if I ask a question? Okay. I have several questions. Dr. Wayne knows this. I just want to first name, and if it hasn't been clear, you know, to the public, to our educators, our staff, and our workforce, this board, I can say, you know, all of us are extremely disappointed, frustrated, angry, in acknowledging just how unacceptable this really is. And that to express just how absolutely urgent and what a priority this must be. And I just want to express my appreciation to Dr. Wayne that even before day one of his official start date, he knew that this was going to need to be absolute, one of the top priorities for him and his team to solve for. And so, with my questions tonight, it's really wanting to pivot and be productive from the frustration, the anger, and the disappointment to really what is this path forward? And, Dr. Wayne, how is this going to be different? How are we going to know that change is truly going to be part of phase one, phase three, whatever it's going to take to make this right?
Thank you for, you know, just reflecting back the concerns. You know, as a board of education, you reflect the, you know, vision, values of the community. That's your job, and reflecting the concerns and the frustration that I know you're hearing and people feel. I think, you know, the concrete answer is what I also shared to Commissioner Shu, is that we need to, you know, that's what you all, you're not in the implementation. You're not the operators. So, what you rely on and seeing is the, you know, key, are there key metrics and key outcomes that we're meeting? And I think that's where some of the frustration has come, by not seeing those. So, that's what you're going to see. And I appreciate Erin providing kind of the detailed walkthrough for Commissioner Bogus and the board of what that will, will look like. I think the other thing that's different, Commissioner Mutamidi pointed it out, is you see, A&amp;M is a partner, you know, a public partner with us. So, there is mutual accountability. They have mutually visible accountability. And the last thing, I just want to share, I mean, I don't know that you've given this direction to me, per se. But, you know, you did give the direction to do an assessment, which is what, so, A&amp;M will provide that assessment. But we also need to do an after-action review. And this is not, we're going to have to change other systems. We have a financial system that is not up to par. We must do an after-action review and be clear on what went wrong and how, when we do another implementation, why that goes well. We haven't put our focus on that yet because, you know, and I, and I know the board supports this, that we need to make sure people are paid. But I just wanted to make sure that it is understood. We have to do that when we get to that point where things have settled down, that that's going to be another step we take.
Tonight's discussion has been really focused, as we need, to be on, you know, the scope, the role at A&amp;M. But at the end of the day, who's responsible is SF Unified. And there are two partners here that we're going to, three partners, including ourselves, that we have to hold accountable. One will be A&amp;M delivering on the scope that they are presenting to us tonight. Infosys, who continues to be, we just approved a contract extension increase to them just a few months ago. And as well as how SFUSD holds its accountable. Now, as a superintendent and the governance structures that we have approved and have committed to falling through with you, is then, who is accountable within SFUSD? I see the organizational structure, project structure. I do have questions. I think you and I have talked about that. So, I really would like to hear from you around where you see the accountability within the district.
Yeah, so, you heard Melissa share the team that will be needing a senior leadership team. So, it's with Melissa as not only our chief technology officer, but the lead on the Empower implementation at this point. It's the Infosys lead, I think is the vice president. And then, it's Erin Covington as the lead from A&amp;M and myself checking in regularly. I think I see my role as to hold all three of those groups accountable. That's why I'm checking in. And I think we've had a chance to talk, and I know you as, you want me a superintendent coming in, you know, listening and learning and really developing a vision for student learning. But this is a foundational piece that needs to be in place. So, it's worth my time to make sure that I'm holding those three partners accountable. And although Melissa and the SFUSD team is, myself included, that's my main role in this is to ensure that we're following through on what we've committed to doing. And if we can't, that we're transparent and honest about it right away.
Yes, I would really encourage that, at every step of the way, even when it is information that may be hard to digest. I mean, just as we've talked about, you know, to really, truly understand what the fixes are needed and necessary. And this is more of a statement, is that the board has to be informed about when we are realizing what those serious gaps are and what are the considerations for either the resources or overall, is the system going to work for us moving forward?
I have a question for the fiscal expert, Mr. Duchan. I'd like to understand both with Pam's engagement thus far and seeing some of the analysis. We're in month nine now. How does the systems gap, either both what we discovered thus far as well as the work moving forward? How does this cause or impact fiscal concerns and our overall position, fiscal position with the California Department of Education?
You don't ask easy questions. If you go back to the FHRA, the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis, one of the main, one of the core parts of it were your fiscal controls. So, at the heart, and I hope I'm answering your question, at the heart of fiscal controls, given the amount of the resources of the district, both human resources as well as the actual fiscal resources pass through this system. So, until you have a payroll system, until you have, I know there's other elements to Empower. Some of them are benefits, some of others. But the key fiscal ones are your payroll and your position control file. Until and unless those are really working properly to give accurate data, those are the two under, besides the revenue, all the what comes in, that's what goes out. And so that's the key part of the equation. So those are key to the fiscal health of the district. I hope that answers it.
And so we have a ways to go in order to establish?
Well, I've looked at the timeline and, you know, it's it's aggressive. So, yeah, I mean, the proof is really in the pudding. So what we would look for is are people being accurately paid? And are the people in the system, is that information accurate? Is there one position for one employee? Is there one vacancy for one vacancy? Is this everything on the page sheet add up to every person on the on the salary sheet to every person who's employed by the district? As those add up, they they need to coincide with one another. And theoretically, this system needs to do that. So that's my understanding of where the contract is going. Looking at all of the elements from the technical ones in terms of how the system operates to the process ones in terms of the people who input data and control the the not, they're not soft processes, but they're they're very clear procedural methods of processing of payroll, of processing benefits, et cetera. There's a ways to go.
Yeah.
But I'll go, that concludes my questions. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you. I just had one follow up. I'm referencing page eighteen of the twenty-four page professional services contract agreement. And it it's under ESFUSD responsibilities and says, Dr. Wayne is the overall executive sponsor. And Melissa Dodd is the project manager, I'm sorry, is the, sorry, executive sponsor, project sponsor. And then we have a project manager yet to be identified on for our team, from the SFUSD team. Do we have somebody in mind already?
We we do, yes. So our, we have our current, our project manager will step in as well, just as I'm doing for this engagement. We work cross-functionally across our HR division, across our business services and payroll division. And so the the team, we're a small but mighty team of two. And so we're the sort of a hub to them, those spokes, but we'll be stepping in to facilitate and lead this effort as well because it is hand in hand with the work that we're already doing around our issue identification resolution effort. So that's all integrated then.
Who is the person again?
Sorry?
Who is the person?
Oh, her name? Her name is Kristel.
Commissioner Schu?
A couple of quick questions. First of all, will the A and M team of eight be on site here?
We are planning for our team to be there in person.
All of you, okay? And are we continuing to hire permanent employees? We had twenty-one openings refilled. Are we still going to continue to try for those?
We're still going to be looking for those because ongoing, we need that staffing. But we this, we're, at the rate we're going, it's going to be a while before that gets filled.
Okay, last question. Where would this money be coming from?
So we're going to use some of the one-time funding we've received from the state. It's, you know, we're not expecting this to be an ongoing expense, so anything that's not offset ultimately by budget savings, salary savings will be used with one time. Will be funded through one-time funds.
Sorry, one more question for Aaron. Has A and M worked with the SAP Systems and or Infosys before?
We've worked extensively with SAP Systems across some varied base of clients. So one of our team members in particular has extensive experience with the human capital components of SAP. So we have familiar, immediate familiar, a broad familiarity and experience across our firm. And we have team members on this SFUSD team with that direct experience.
As well as Infosys. You've worked with them before?
I will have to double check all of our records. As I've mentioned, it's very common for us to work for all different types of consultancies. So walking into this situation, I'm not concerned about our ability to work with them because it's very normal for us. I personally have not worked with Infosys. I would have to check across our broader broader firm to know that for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, after this, we will close discussion and Dr. Wayne is going to give a final remarks.
I'm just recalling just the Melissa clarification question. Has Infosys implemented this SAP system before?
Yes, they have implemented the payroll and components of the success factors, the human capital side, human resources side as well.
Okay, I'm going to close discussion. Dr. Wayne, final words?
Just to summarize, again, before you you take action, you know, bringing forward this contract with A and M to do two or potentially three phases, the triage phase and the sustainability phase. And 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 again, the key piece is that at the end of the triage phase, we'll be able to provide you what the key performance indicators are before moving on to the to phase two. And also want to go back to just being very clear in response to your question. So I described how I'm holding the the team, that I'm responsible for holding the team accountable. And that is our vendors and partners, as well as Melissa, as well as this is really a cross-functional effort. There's also the business services team and the human resources team and the heads of each one who are part of the leadership team on this. But ultimately, I'm the one accountable to make sure that this is, that, you know, we're stabilizing the system. And so when you're looking to who, to whom you're to hold accountable, that's me. That's why you have me here as the leader to make sure that we're following through on what we say we're going to do. And like I said, and if we're not able to, you're looking to me to be clear and transparent about that and what we're doing to address it. But I'm I'm ultimately accountable to make sure that this issue is addressed.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Roll call vote this time. Mr. Steele?
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schu?
Yes.
Commissioner McTominay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes?
Thank you. Thank you to staff. Thank you to Aaron and to Pam and Elliot this evening for your remarks, presentation. And we look forward, Dr. Wayne, to the progress and the weekly updates that the board will receive around the progress and what lies, the work that lies ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to a special meeting.
I'd like to adjourn.
Calling a special meeting.
Yes, I'd like to formally adjourn at nine twelve. Thank you.